I'd like to welcome everyone this evening. Just a reminder that your cellphones, please disable them. I had my cellphone with my ringer all weekend, just in case EMS and emergency services need to call, so I wouldn't miss their call. But I turned it off earlier, so. Just to move forward, under Old Business, I do need a motion to revive consideration of the youth representation at the commissioners' meeting for Old Business. Do I have a motion, please?
So move.
Motion's been made to move the, from, to Old Business to revive consideration of the youth representation at the commissioners' meeting. All those in favors, any, any discussion, excuse me. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Need motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, move we approve tonight's consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion been made to approve the agenda as amended, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. There are no public comments. Moving on to Old Business, discussion of youth representation at the Board of Commissioners meeting, and Dr. Stone, please. My screen keeps fading.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate this opportunity to come back and chat with you a little bit more about the youth board representation at the Board of Commissioners meeting. I know we had some questions last time, and hopefully we can get a lot of those questions answered today, and get into a little more detail about what this position will entail and what it also will not be. So we just wanted to give you a couple slides, and you should have this information in your packet as well. The purpose of this initiative, I guess, is twofold. One is, of course, to expose young people to local government, allowing them to provide insight to the Board of Commissioners from a youth perspective, and I think also to provide the board members on a youth perspective, having a young person present and available at meetings to hear, to hear some ideas from about what's going on at a youth level from a youth perspective. So just a couple of criterias for eligibility. We want to make sure that these folks are accountable, we want to make sure that they have a commitment, so we'd like to see them being involved at least six months in the Lee County Youth Council, or having completed the Lee County Young Commissioner 4-H Club two-week program, and then be an active member of that club for at least three months. They would also submit an application to serve as a youth representative to the clerk of the board, and of course, the Board of Commissioners could approve those applications. The structure of the position, the youth board position representative would be a rotating position, so different young people would have the opportunity to be at the board meetings. The members of the Lee County Young Commissioners and Youth Council would rotate representation, so at one meeting you'd have a young commissioner member, at the next meeting you'd have a representative from the Youth Council, and then there would be limitations where no young person could serve any more than four meetings during the calendar year, so we'd make sure that we had a good variety of folks that were having this experience. The role of the young person at the board meetings, at the beginning, the youth would be recognized by the chairperson, they would then be seated by the clerk to the board during the meetings, and they could be called upon by any member of the board to provide input on youth-related matters. The youth representative would then provide an update at the conclusion of the meeting on any projects that they've been working on as a youth council. Finally, some expectations of the youth board representative. We want to make sure that they were working with their club leader, their advisor, to stay current and informed on local community issues, that they would be prepared, they would review the agenda before each meeting they are scheduled to attend. If they were unable to attend, they would find a qualified substitute, they would conduct themselves in a professional manner, a parent guardian, or adult chaperone would be present with them at every meeting, and they'd also be responsible for providing a summary of the Lee County Board of Commissioners meeting to the membership at their respective youth councils when they, when they went back. So, so the other folks that didn't have the opportunity to attend would be familiar with what took place at the most recent Board of Commissioner meeting. So that's just a brief update on some of the things we talked about and kind of hashed out a little bit more to give you some more, give you a little more criterion protocol about this, what this position would look like. Does anybody have any questions?
I have questions for Dr. Stone. Commissioner Carver?
No.
No questions. Commissioner Connect?
Who keeps up with them? Do you keep up with them?
We, we would be the representative, because we, we do work with each of those groups, we'd be the one responsible for coordinating that youth participation and the adult, the adult leader's role.
And following up and make sure they're qualified and that stuff. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yeah. Is there any age, you know, like, we're videotaping these meetings, and is there any policy or state law that you can think of that may pertain to kids?
Well, we, we actually have a photo release and video release form of any young people that are involved in our program, so we could certainly use those forms that the parents would sign off on giving approval for that youth to participate.
And I would just like to add, I don't think I can support the person coming and sitting on our board, but I would support them being on our committees, I think that would be beneficial. You know, from what I'm reading, you know, the representative was sat beside the clerk, the clerk, and the parents will be out there. It's an elect, you know, we're an elected board, and I just feel like that, that we just need to stay away from that, but whatever the board's will is, it's just my opinion. I would like to see him on the Parks and Rec Board and other boards that, that would interest him.
And Commissioner Sharp, I, I don't, I don't believe the intent of this youth role would actually be that as a board member. I think it would just be a youth representative that would be present at the meetings. If there was a youth-related issues, the commissioners could go to them. I don't, I don't necessarily see them playing an active role in the regular business of the meetings unless called upon. So I, I guess, at, at that first meeting, maybe it came across incorrectly or unclearly that it would actually be a, a youth member. The intention was not for, for this person to be an official member of the board, more of just a, a youth advocate or a youth representative from the community.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay.
And, and I'm for the youth being involved, but, but just not at this level right around here.
Okay.
For the boards and committee, I'm, I'm good with that. Thank you.
Sir.
Commissioner Lovick, questions?
What is the difference in the Lee County Youth Commissioners and the Youth Council? What differ, what's the difference in that?
Yeah, the, the Lee County Young Commissioners started, I think they're in their ninth or tenth year, that was a program that we started. It start, it began as a two-week summer program, and after those young people would go through that program, they would become a regularly meaning 4-H club, and they focused on civics and government. After we found out a little bit more about the State Youth Council and what that is, we thought that might be an additional way for young people to get involved, so that's kind of another group that allows young people another opportunity. So the focus is slightly different, and that would actually be a county, the, the County Youth Council would actually be a county committee or function as a county board in that capacity.
Good, thank you.
Where the Young Commissioners is a 4-H club, technically.
I, I just want to add that in many cases, we always see our kids leaving the county and moving on. I, I encourage, you know, we need to encourage our youth to consider staying here in Lee County after they graduate either from high school or from college, and we have a lot of opportunities on the horizon to keep them here. It's just imperative that we incorporate them within the community, and this is one of those aspects of it. So I'm, I'm asking for your support of this initiative. Any, any other further questions of Dr. Stone? Madam Clerk, do you have?
Ms. Reeves couldn't be here this evening, but would like this, the following incorporated into the minutes. I fully support the manager's recommendation for the Board of Elections, I'm sorry, this, skipping ahead. Let me, let me get to the next message.
Okay.
So, he opposes, opposes placing a youth on an elected board, however, I support and recommend adding a youth seat to all or any one of the 27 boards and commissions we already have in place. I also ask that the board recognize that this proposed policy is limited to only those youth who are members of one of the existing programs, Youth Council or the Young Commissioners. Other students are ineligible according to this policy regardless of their interests or capabilities. Moreover, it does not address an age limit, or I may have overlooked it. I'm open to youth participation in local government in the right arena. I hope the board will consider my concerns.
Any, any questions there? Dr. Stone, any follow-on?
No.
Was, was one of the, one was an age limit, or an age, have an age?
What, what is our age limit on both programs?
Yeah, it, it's basically high school. I think the criteria for entering into the Young Commissioners program is rising eighth graders, but in essence, it's mostly high school students who are active participants in, in both of those youth coun, in both the council and the Young Commissioners.
Any other comments?
I'd like to ask a point of order. If you're not attending a meeting, you can, as a commissioner, you can read in something to the minutes, is that, is that something that's been discussed before?
We do allow comments from the, from commissioners who are not here to make statements, it's just like in the, you know, someone couldn't be here for public comment, and they can send in a letter, and we'll read the letter into the record as their comments.
Okay.
They just can't vote.
I got you. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the youth representative on the Board of Commissioners as well as the Parks and Recreation Board?
So move.
Motion's been made to consider appointing a youth representative to Board of Commissioners meetings as well as the Parks and Rec Board. Any further discussion?
Yes, I'd like to add something, please. What I'm concerned about this whole thing is, is not the youth involved in this deal, and this is not a direct toward you. I'm concerned about what we've relayed to our youth in our community at times, is come up political matters sometimes. And as long as we don't allow that political thing to come in here, this 4-H thing is a good thing. I did it when I was a younger child, and fell in love with firefighting, and did it for 17 years, paid. It's a great thing, 4-H groups are definitely great. And my main concern is, like I say, if we can keep this politics out of it, we need to show as a board, for one, that they can make the right calls on anything, put politics out of and do the right thing for this community and this county. That's the number one thing, that's what I got voted in for. So, with that being said, us as adults and local elected officials, hopefully we can show this young person that's going to be sitting with us, I think, the right way to do things. Let's get politics out of this thing, and, and we're, we're local, we can help control some things. I get it, above us is out of control, but I hope as a board that we can come together and show them, politics is not the problem, doing the right thing is the problem. We've got to do the right thing for our, our county, and that's the comment I've got about it.
I get what you're trying to refer to, it's like an internship program, 4-H.
Yeah, it's, it's a great program.
I think this is kind of like an internship program.
Yeah.
More than anything.
Motion been made, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Records show there's one in opposition. Thank you. Moving on to the next item under New Business, Davenport Debt Presentation, and we have...
Lisa.
Ms. Minter.
Sorry. With the additional funds have been allocated to the sports complex project, administration discussed it and felt that it was a good time to have our financial advisors, or the county's financial advisors, come in and make a presentation, so Mr. Ted Cole is here this evening from Davenport Public Finance to, to come and talk to you about the debt, county's debt capacity and our debt funding model. He will also be addressing the proposed change in a Moody's rating methodology that's coming forward, along with addressing the environmental, social, and governance methodology that was brought to the board's attention back at the August 29th meeting, and will address that. So you have a copy of the presentation, was in your agenda package, plus you have a bound copy at your seat tonight, so I will turn it over to Mr. Cole.
Thank you, good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I'm Ted Cole with Davenport. I think the last time that we had presented to you all, my colleague Mitch Bergulio may have been here. He and I worked closely together on Lee County and a number of other clients. So, everybody should have a copy of the information in front of you, I would encourage you, as we go through the information, if you have any questions at all, please stop me and ask the questions, and we'll kind of work our way through those three primary topics that, that Lisa mentioned. And we're going to start with the capital funding analysis. There are page numbers in the lower right corner of each page. Not looking for any action from you all this evening, I think this is informational, and, and again, here to answer any questions. So I'm going to pick up on the bottom, on page three, again, the page number's in the lower right corner, and just sort of establish a couple of things on the county's bond rating. You'll see on the left-hand side of the page, there are three national rating agencies, Moody's, Standard &amp; Poor's, and Fitch. Moody's and Standard &amp; Poor's are the most commonly used, and you can see that you all are a AA2 from Moody's, a straight AA from Standard &amp; Poor's. Those ratings are in parity with one another, and you're two notches away from the highest bond rating that any local government can achieve, which is AAA. Moody's last published a report on the county in May of '21. Standard &amp; Poor's doesn't publish quite as often, theirs was in April of '18. The rating reports are in the appendix, if anybody wants to look at those. We have a few slides that I'm going to cover that show Lee County relative to other national counties and North Carolina counties, and we're going to use information we have from the Moody's database. So when you see some of the comparatives that we have, we're using Moody's, we subscribe to their database, and you can see, just for perspective, nationally, counties, and we're looking specifically at counties, not cities and towns, there are 218 different counties that are rated AA2 by Moody's, one of which is Lee County. The rating category right above you, AA1, there's about 124. Rating category right beneath you, about 160. And maybe a little more of interest to you would be those counties in North Carolina that are rated in those three categories. So AA2, including Lee County, there's 22 counties that are rated AA2, there are 11 that are rated AA1, and there's nine that are rated AA3. So again, your rating category, the category right above you, and the one right beneath you, a little more than half of the North Carolina counties have bond ratings, the other half don't have them for whatever reason, they haven't needed them, they rely on bank financing or other programs for financing, not that they're not credit-worthy, but not every county has a, an up-to-date bond rating. Okay? So we're going to start with just a quick look at your existing debt on page four. This is all the debt outstanding as of June 30, 2022, and we've got a few footnotes there that it, just, you know, making sure that we're all on the same page, that it includes, you know, a 2021 financing we did related to the, some property acquisition, the Moretti property, that is a, an interest-only loan that has a principal payment of a little over $7 million coming due in June of '23, as well as a more recent seller financing for, for property that you all entered into back in June. When we look at all the debt outstanding, rounded down slightly, it's about $74 million outstanding. On the right-hand side of the page, you'll see the principal payments, the interest payments, and the total payments set up by fiscal year. Everything we look at is on a fiscal year basis, so in the current year, FY '23, there's about $11.6 million that is due, plus that balloon payment that is due on, on the 2021 installment. When I get to the discussion about new debt that we're talking about issuing for projects, I'll wrap that in. We're planning to refinance that piece of debt when we are ready to move forward with the Community College project. But when you strip out that balloon payment, you're paying a little over $11 million a year, and you can see over time, that's stepping down. You can see that graphically as well. On the far-right column, I just want to point out, this is a, a ratio that is tied to one of your debt policies, it's called the 10-year payout ratio, and essentially what that's measuring is, in the next 10 years, it's forward-looking, how much of that $74 million, just the principal, how much of that $74 million will be repaid? In 10 years from now, absent any new debt, about 78% of this debt will have been repaid. Higher percentage is better, means you're amortizing your debt more quickly, you're not backloading the debt. And I'm going to come full circle on that when I talk about your policy. So this is your current tax-supported debt profile, very normal-looking profile, we just have that one balloon payment that we need to take care of before the end of fiscal year '23, and again, the plan is to take care of that when we finance the Community College project. Page five, it's the exact same information, but what we've done for you is just shown you of the $74 million, and I'm looking in the bottom-left, how much of that was issued for county purposes versus schools versus community college. So you get a little bit of sense of the debt that's outstanding, you know, where has the funding been focused, and, you know, how does one major category compare to the other? Okay? But otherwise, the graph is the same, and the table on the right is the same. All of your debt will be paid off by 2038, and we know these payments, you know, to the dollar. All right, any questions on that? All right, we got, picking up on page six, we have the first of three slides that talk about debt policies and debt ratios. Page six on the left, this is that 10-year payout ratio that I mentioned earlier. The green bars on the left are up around 78%, that's your ratio, and it gets a little stronger over time until it gets to 100. 100% is the best you can achieve. You have a policy, which is the red line, that says we want to be able to demonstrate that we have a 10-year payout ratio of 50% or better. Higher is better here, it means you're amortizing debt more quickly, so you're, you're well above your policy of 50%, you're at 78.5%, again, higher is better. And when you look at the upper right-hand side, Lee County is in gold, and that's the 78%. The light green are those national counties across the country, the dark green are the North Carolina counties, those blue lines on the dark green bars show you the min and the max. So we're showing you the median with the bar, but for North Carolina, we can show you the min and the max, and so when you look, for example, the second green bar from the bottom, North Carolina AA2 median, that is your specific rating category. The median looks to be, you know, in the 70% range, so you're above the median here, which is good, and you can also see within that universe of counties, there's somebody as low as 40% and hi, high as 100%. That's that blue line. So just a little perspective, not only that you're in compliance with your policy, but that you line up really well to other similarly or even higher-rated counties here within North Carolina or nationally. Same concept on page seven, same basic setup, but it's a ratio that's measuring the debt outstanding, that $74 million of principal, as a percent of your total tax base, which is about 6.7 billion. So we have $74 million of debt outstanding, we have a total tax base of about 6.7 billion. When we do that math, your debt to assessed value is a little over 1%. Those are those green bars in the upper left, 1% and declining, it's declining because you're paying principal off every year, and we've assumed a growth rate in your tax base of 3%. You have a policy of 2%, not to exceed 2%, I should say. So you want to be below that, you are below that, lower is better, so you're in compliance and then some with this debt to assessed value. When we look at this in a vacuum, you can say, well, the county's got debt capacity, we have the ability to take on debt and still be within, you know, within reason, and still be within compliance with our policy, and in a reasonable range to our rated peers. Now, debt capacity does not mean it's affordable, two different, related but different questions, right? We have capacity, when we measure it certain ways, then the other question is, well, how do we pay for it? And we're going to get there as well.
Good question.
Sure.
Talking about the North Carolina median, is that just the 40, the counties that have more, that have a rating?
Ratings, that's right. And there's three bars there, AA1, there's 11 counties on page three that make up that group. AA2, y'all, 22 counties, and then nine. So the green bars are, in summary, about 40, but they're different depending on the rating category.
Thank you.
Okay? When you're, I'm back on page seven, upper right corner, the comparison, right? So your gold bar has you a little over 1%, 1.11%. I'm going to come back to the national counties in green, because those look a little out of whack, and I'll explain that. Dark green bars are the North Carolina counties, and so you're a little bit above the median where the bars are, but you can see you're well within range of the upper limit with those blue lines. You have similarly rated North Carolina counties that are pushing to, a little over 2% when we talk about debt to assessed value. So, again, we have capacity within our policy, we have some capacity to take on more debt and still maintain a reasonable comparison to other rated communities. The national light green bars are a little, look strange, because when you get into other states, they have independent school districts, so for example, South Carolina, counties do not carry school debt on their books. They have independent school districts that have their own taxing authority, their own debt issuance authority, and they issue debt. So when you look at counties' books in South Carolina and several other states, there are many that don't have all, all the debt associated with public schools. That's why that ratio looks a little out of whack. But the North Carolina bars are truly apples to apples for the comparison. And then finally, on this topic, page eight, debt service to expenditures, essentially, how much are you paying each year for your debt relative to your budget? Your debt's about $11 million per year, that's principal plus interest, it's declining over time. Your overall budget, including debt, is in the $85 million range, so when we do that math in the, in the upper left, you're at about a little over 13%. Little over 13% of the budget is going towards debt service. You have a policy set at 15% as the not to exceed, this is the one where you're the closest to your policy, but you are in compliance, you got a little bit of capacity there. You can see over time, the capacity gets larger as you pay down your debt, but in the next few years, it's a little bit tighter up against that policy. On the upper right, the comparison, Lee County in gold, that's the 13%. Those national, those national medians, again, look a little, a little out of whack, given my explanation earlier, so I would focus on the North Carolina peers in particular. So at the 13%, you're a little bit higher than the green bars, but you can also see you're in a very reasonable range to those blue lines. So you've got AA2 and AA1 counties in North Carolina that are in excess of 15, and in some cases, even 20 or 25%. Not to say they aren't an outlier, they are at 20%, but even at 15 to 20%, it's not terribly uncommon to see some local governments, particularly high-growth communities, that rely heavily on debt to fund capital needs, to be in that, you know, 15-plus or minus percent range. So the takeaway from those three slides is, you have good debt policies, you're in compliance with all of them, you have some room within all of them to take on additional debt and still have a debt profile that's commensurate with what we would expect to see for a highly rated community. And that takes us to a discussion about affordability, if we're good to move there on page nine. And I apologize about the small print, it's, I think that's part of the reason why we didn't put it on the... put it on the, on the screen. But if you take a look at this, and I would suggest we just start on the left-hand side, it's actually pretty straightforward. Everything we're looking at is on a fiscal year basis, far left, starting with the year we're in, which is fiscal year twenty-three. Columns B, C, and D are the existing debt payment schedules for the county debt, the school debt, and the community college debt. Again, we just broke those out separately, but those all make up that seventy-four million dollars of debt outstanding. So B, C, and D is debt you've already issued for those purposes, it's going to pay off over time. Columns E, F, and G are just placeholders. We're going to get to that in a moment when we talk about potential new projects and debt. So right now, column H is just simply summing up B, C, and D, which is your tax-supported debt schedule, payment schedule going forward. Okay? That's column H. The middle of this page tracks your budgeting process and that is where are the dollars coming from as you put your debt service budget together? And you've got several sources of funding, many of these have been in place for a number of years. We update it at least annually, maybe more often when we have a need to, and we've, we've sort of tracked this along with your staff on an ongoing basis. So I'm going to start with I, my glasses. The equivalent of about eight-point-six pennies on the tax rate that has been dedicated to debt service. You can see what that number is, it's about five-point-seven million dollars in this current fiscal year, and it's growing with an assumed growth rate of three percent. Obviously, we don't know exactly how it's going to grow one year to the next and that's why we revisit it. We talk about those growth rate assumptions with staff every year, and this is where, for the time being, we've landed with the growth assumption in column I. Column J are funds that are from the restricted sales tax, Articles forty and forty-two. Those revenues are restricted for school capital and debt service. Those are being grown at four percent for the next few years, you can see it's about four-point-four million dollars. But I would note, in fiscal year twenty-six, they step down, if you see that, they're going from four-eight to four-point-two million. That's not because we're expecting sales tax to drop off. Those are legally restricted for school capital and school debt service, so you've got to look over at the school debt service column C and you'll see that debt service starts to step down. That's where we started to step down the revenue in column I. What we don't want to do is be counting on column I growing, but not have a legitimate project on the left-hand side of this slide to, to use it. We don't want to use that restricted sales tax to offset debt for a non-school project, which we're about to get into and discuss. So just to note, column I does grow for a few years, but then we are purposely stepping those dollars down so that we don't have more of those revenues than we have school debt service against which to, to spend it.
Point of clarification, what we're saying is that those sales taxes can only be used to compensate for debt service, they can't be banked?
They can be banked.
They can be banked.
They can be banked, they can be used for-
Debt service or capital.
Or capital.
I got you.
But they can be banked and used later. We're just not showing them being banked here, not because we're expecting them to be spent, otherwise, just we didn't want to make that assumption at this point.
We don't lose the money.
But yes, they can be banked. They can be banked and, and/or used for capital or debt service.
Thank you.
Column H, Article, I think this is the Article forty-six, quarter-cent sales tax that was voted. Back when the state did a Medicaid swap, they gave you all the opportunity to vote a quarter-cent sales tax. You did that, it passed, that's generating a little over three million dollars. There is a growth rate there of four percent. That is not have, that does not have the same limitations on it that the, the column to the left does, so we have not backed that down. We have shown that growing and being at the, at a constant level plus growth every year. That's column K. Column L is a budgeting practice you all have had in place, which is you are appropriating as part of the budget, certain dollars that are going as a capital reserve contribution, and that's growing at a, at a more modest one percent. But that is a practice that's been in the budget. So you should be able to, if you wanted, go back and tie any of those funding sources back to a, a budget document. And then finally, column M is in Michael. These are some federal subsidies that are coming to you all to offset interest that you pay on some, a certain type of debt that was issued back in two thousand nine and two thousand ten. There's a certain calculation that goes into those, but they do go away, that's why that's stopping. That program will stop when the debt that we issued under that program stops. So column N is in Nancy, sums up I through M. And this is going to allow us to go more quickly through a few other slides, I know it's a little bit detailed, but you've got column N is in Nancy that is summing up I through M, right? So you have H, which is the payments you've got to make, and you've got N is in Nancy, which is the dollars that have been identified, yes, with growth rates and projections, but dollars that have been identified. And we compare those two columns to one another in column O. And you're going to see that in every year, you've got a surplus, meaning there are more dollars that have been identified through this, this program than current debt service requires, right? And so this is giving us a running start at the CIP and the capital projects we're about to discuss. But you're in the range of, you know, two-plus-million dollars a year of surpluses under column O, which is a very nice position to be in when you're starting to talk about real significant projects that, that might require debt. And then the last thing I would point out on this page is column T. You have some accumulated dollars there that have been set aside, that is another resource for you all when we start talking about new projects. It's a, it's about five-point-five million, and those are dollars that are separate and distinct from maybe your fund balance that you all think about and talk about when you're talking about a fund balance policy and things like that. Those are segregated and, and different dollars that generally are expected to be used to help fund capital. So you've got a lot of good things going for you. You've got, you've got a tried-and-true, it's been in place, method of budgeting for debt service that is sustainable, and those current-year revenues are more than enough to pay the debt service that you are obligated to right now. And that allows you to start thinking about new projects that might require debt with some built-in affordability, plus you've got this accumulated reserve of a little over five million. So that's our starting point for affordability. Any questions on that? All right. So here's the next sort of natural step to this discussion on page eleven. In talking with staff, what we're looking at is, is building upon your existing debt and we've made some assumptions about some potential new projects. The middle of the right-hand side, debt issued, community college facility, we're assuming that's in the spring of twenty-three at an amount of fourteen million. The multi-sports complex in the spring of twenty-three at an amount equal to forty million, and the county library in the spring of twenty-four at sixteen million. So all in, what we're about to discuss is about seventy million dollars of additional debt using, across these three projects, using current estimates. I know architecture and design work continues, those things will evolve, but I think these are the latest numbers that you all have discussed. And so we're modeling that seventy million dollars, and that's what we're going to add to that debt affordability page in a minute. We're modeling that debt in a way that the Local Government Commission in Raleigh would be very receptive to, and that is something called level principle, where your first year's payment is the highest and it goes down. Twenty years, which is a max term that they would look for for this type of debt, and an interest rate of five percent, which, yes, rates have been rising, this still has some cushion in it, you know, we're in, still below four percent, maybe not a whole lot below four percent for twenty-year debt, we're using five percent. So there's cushion in there, maybe not as much cushion as we had six months ago or four months ago, but there is still cushion in there relative to where current rates are. And you can see in that upper-left graph, the dark green is the debt you've already got, that's the seventy-four million. And then we've just incrementally added on the community college facility in blue, multi-sports in gold, library in green. So you can see how your debt profile evolves over the next roughly twenty-four months, and it peaks out at just under eighteen million dollars a year, right? So it's a significant change with seventy million. You've got seventy-four million in place right now, and this analysis assumes that you're, over those two years, bringing on an additional seventy. Okay? Any questions on that? All right, so if we go to page twelve, we wanted to circle back on your debt policies and your debt ratios. The upper-left, that's the ten-year payout. We don't want to be below the red line, and you're not. We're a little bit lower than we were, right? We were at seventy-four percent. Now, we're, we're sort of getting down into the mid-to-upper sixty percent, but we're still above our policy. That's because on that twenty-year debt that we're issuing, that seventy million, that, those debt issues have a fifty percent payout by themselves. So they are just adding to the mix and sort of bringing that overall percentage down a little bit, which is nothing you can do about that, but you are set up in such a way that you can demonstrate, we can demonstrate you won't go below fifty. Debt to assessed value in the upper-right gets real close to that two percent, but it's sort of right there and then starts to step down again. So based on our projections for the debt service and the growth in the tax base, no real issues there. And as you might expect, in the bottom, the debt service to expenditures does go above the fifteen percent for what looks like two, maybe three years. You know, with a little lower interest rate, that will help. If, if your budget were to grow a little more, that would help. But even if they don't, at least from our perspective, and I, I know this is something that we'll want to talk more about when the time comes to potentially approve any debt, that potentially going out of compliance with that policy for a few years, I don't believe rises to the level where you say, "We can't do this because of that." I, I would say it allows you all to have a conversation and make a decision about whether you'd like to make an exception to that policy for a few years. That's totally a local decision. We have had conversations with the Local Government Commission, we've had conversations with the bond rating agencies and say, "Look, we're not going to just move our policy to eighteen or twenty percent. We recognize that we may be out of whack with our policy for, or out of compliance for a few years, but we believe the projects have merit and otherwise have a lot of good reasons to pursue them, and we're willing to do that and, and be out of compliance for a year, a few years." And you're able to make that exception when the time comes to, to have that discussion.
And being a county that's growing, looks very favorable by the bond rating agencies and the LGC to go over that ratio. And we've seen them do it numerous times.
One of the most common reasons why folks maybe have compliance, compliance, I don't want to say issues, we call them issues. And, and again, the rating agencies look at me, it's, "You could amend your policy and make room for all of this debt and say, you know, we just wanted to handle it that way." I think they actually find comfort in the fact that rather than do that, when you had to make the commitments to fund the projects and issue the debt, the discussion was had and you did so knowing that, "Hey, we may be out of whack for a few years with this policy with, but we've discussed it, we understand it, we made a collective agreement to, to make the exception." And for the rating agencies, what all of that demonstrates is there's a real conversation going on, there's a discussion, you all aren't just sort of rubber-stamping something that's put in front of you by staff. And they, they, they have been, you know, looked at that very favorably in other similar situations. All right, so come full circle on page thirteen to the affordability. The only thing that we've changed here is column E. Column E is the payments for the seventy million dollars that we talked about. It starts in fiscal twenty-four, when we do the community college and the multi-sports, it steps up a little bit when we add the library, and then it starts to step back down. So that's, column E is the seventy million. Nothing else has changed up until column O. And what you'll notice now is we got a few years where column O goes negative. We've got a deficit, right? So we had positives, we had surpluses, but we added this new debt for these projects. O goes negative for a few years, but remember, we've got that five-and-a-half million of a capital reserve over in column T, and we're going to use that for a few years in column Q. I can't imagine you folks in the audience following along, A, B, C, D, but hopefully y'all see it and you understand, we're supplementing the debt budget, in this case, for three years, from those accumulated reserves, and we get back to a place where those surpluses go, or the surpluses return. So our takeaway from this is that this capital program that we've been discussing and modeling is affordable. It's, it's paid for by virtue of the budgeting approach that you all have taken for debt. And hopefully that is, you know, just helpful perspective as you're going into further decisions about all of these projects. Any questions on that?
And what's in column S?
No additional outside revenues, tax revenues needed to support this. If there was a shortfall that we couldn't cover, column S would show a tax equivalent of a penny or two pennies or whatever it might take to plug the gap. But because of all of the revenue sources in the middle of the page, plus that reserve, no additional revenues beyond that that's needed.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for pointing that out.
So that's the end of the capital planning discussion. I know decisions about things with each of these projects are evolving, design, bidding, engineering. There will come a time where, you know, we need to have conversations with the Local Government Commission about what we want to do. We typically try to have those three or four months ahead of when we think we want to do a borrowing. Local Government Commission is very focused on bids and permits, so it's important that we try to keep bids and permits in focus moving forward for each of these projects. They like you to borrow the money when you have bids and permits in hand so they know that you're not borrowing too much and not borrowing too little. All right.
Any questions?
All right. Moody's Rating Methodology. Again, Moody's is one of the ratings you have, and by the way, there's nothing to do on this either, it is a work in progress with them. Moody's let the world know, so to speak, our world, know that they were proposing or thinking about changing the, the approach to rating local governments, and they rate like thirty-five-hundred local governments across the country. They did that in the spring and they published some information. We've taken that information and we've done, we've summarized it and we've tried to model it so that we can begin to understand what the potential changes, what impact that might have on our clients' bond ratings, right? Bond ratings are important.
I'm sorry, are all the changes, the ESG stuff?
Separate, totally separate topic. That's going to be our third topic.
I'm sorry.
This, no, no, no problem. This is totally separate from ESG. So they, they put this information out in the spring, they had a request for comment through July, several people commented. They are now at Moody's digesting all of those comments and they are working towards rolling out the actual new methodology. We haven't seen it yet, it could come out next week, it could come out at the end of December, no real timetable. They have also told us that their expectation would be that this new methodology might result in eighty percent of the bond ratings they have out there will not change, so the vast majority of local governments' ratings wouldn't change. Ten percent, the rating could go higher, ten percent, the rating could go lower by virtue of this change in methodology. And what I'm about to explain to you was preliminary, presumably something is going to get tweaked, and when they do roll this out, you know, we'll, we'll have to adjust. So page fifteen just gives you a sense of where you are. We've already established that, you're a AA two county with Moody's. And they talk a little bit about what could make the rating go higher. And they talk a little bit about what could make the rating go higher, what could make the rating go lower, increasing reserves, expanding your economy would help your rating go higher. You have financial strength in operations, your proximity and workforce dynamics are solid. What could make the rating go down? Failure to appropriate debt service, you know, higher unemployment, tax base erosion, or the use of reserves. So you're, you're solidly AA2. Under the current methodology that's in place and has been for a number of years, page 16, it's really a two-pronged approach. The left-hand side is the data that they pull from audits, budgets, and census. It's the quantitative scorecard. And you'll see on the left-hand side, economy and tax base is worth 30% of the rating, and there's very specific ratios they look at. Finances are worth 30% of the rating. There's specific ratios they calculate. Management is 20%, debt and pensions is 20%. So they have a very data-driven, quantitative part of their analysis. And then on the right-hand side are the qualitative factors that they can tweak, use as tweaks, that are capturing things that might help your rating or hurt your rating, but they're more of the story, things that aren't captured in the numbers. So that's how they go about it today, and they're landing for you all and have been for a while now at the AA2. Okay? Under the proposed methodology, page 17, they are talking about moving to more of a three-pronged approach on the left-hand side of 17. The first being, they're still going to have a scorecard. And it's gonna, it's gonna be different from the one they have, they're changing some of the weightings, they're changing some of the specific calculations. Again, what they published in the spring is not necessarily what they're going to roll out, but they, they indicated that there would be some changes to the scorecard and that they would also be pulling in not only general fund and governmental funds, but any business or utility funds into their analyses. So there's the Component 1 Scorecard. Component 2 is a more limited universe of notching factors, maybe one of which we believe is attributable to Lee County, and I'll explain that in a moment. And then they have a third category or, or, or prong to their rating analysis, which is other considerations. Kind of a catch-all. That's where the analysts, the credit committee can take into account things that aren't captured in the numbers, things that aren't in the notching factors that they believe are significant or relevant enough to play into the, the rating discussion. So when you look at page 18, there's two scorecards. The left-hand side is the existing methodology. This is how they go about populating your scorecard using your 2021 data. There's lots of calculations that they put in there, and you can see the weight for each calculation, the score, the weighted score, and the rating category. And you can see that it rolls up on the left-hand side to a 1.89, which according to that matrix in the bottom left, puts you at a AA2. That is your rating. So we don't believe they're doing, applying any of those qualitative factors, where they didn't publish them, because the score from the scorecard lines up to the rating that they've published for the county, AA2. And you can see you're on the, on the right end of the AA2. What I mean by that is you're getting close to the AA1. 189 is pretty close to the 181. So that's how they currently rate you. Our attempt at modeling the new methodology, which I will tell you is probably not perfect because they, they only provided so much information, plus the fact we know they are likely to make some tweaks to this before they roll it out. That's why I said at the beginning, there's really nothing for us to do here other than be aware and start to be thinking about this, because we don't have a perfect, you know, all the details with which to model it. But we've done our best. And what you're going to see here is, under the new methodology, the score is coming out at a 367. They've changed their buckets. A 367 is currently a AA3, right? So that's one rating level beneath your AA2. And then we believe that it's possible that they might have a, one of those five notching factors that would apply to you all related to depreciation of your capital assets. And in this case, that notching factor could work against you, meaning that you have highly depreciated assets, which to them is an indication that you're not replacing your assets at the same pace that they're depreciating. Now, keep in mind, you don't carry the schools as assets, right, on your, on your audits. Those are carried on the, the school audit, if I'm not mistaken. And so there's adjustments that will have to be made to this. So I would just say, take this with a, with just sort of, I don't want to say a grain of salt, but it's, it's not final. But we believe it's possible that they could apply that notching factor for capital asset depreciation. But we believe if they do, it still keeps you in that AA3 rating category. The question is, will you be able, will they be able, when this all rolls out, to continue to keep you at the AA2 rating? We think so. When we've done this for other places, we've seen the change, a bigger change from where they are now to where they could be. But time will tell. Again, they believe 80% of the ratings will not change. They have those other consideration section in their approach that I think allows them to pull in more of the story and things like that. So our thought was, this is an exercise to give particularly your staff, but you all as well, an early warning system of what might be coming. We will continue to adjust and refine this as they're putting out more, more detailed information.
Do you have an estimate of how many people in the AA2 bracket with us in North Carolina would have a similar result, ending up in AA3?
Not, not at this time, but I think that's something we could follow up with, with staff on.
Okay, but we're still talking about only 10% of the people they're looking at having their ratings move in the negative direction, right?
That, that was what they provided as having, before they rolled this out, doing some testing. And their thought was about 10% would result in a rating going down from the current level. Page 19 really just recaps some of what I've already talked about on timing. So if we can, we'll wrap up with the ESG, which begins on page 20, really begins on page 21. So a little bit of background, page 21 is high level. What Moody's has explained is the concepts of ESG, environmental, social, and governance, have been a part of their rating methodology, is a part of their current rating methodology. These are things that they take into consideration currently. What they are doing now is they are publishing in a more disciplined way, ESG ratings and write-ups about local governments than they had historically. So the initiative is really about the publishing of the data. What they tell us is, you know, elements of this have always been, if you will, quote-unquote, baked into the rating. I think also, you know, there's a demand from the investor side, so those individuals or institutions that are buying municipal bonds, whether it's bond funds, mutual funds, insurance companies, or individuals, want, some of them wanting to know more about the bond issuer, in this case, Lee County, their ESG profile. And I think so, a lot of this is driven by the investing side, because Moody's offers all sorts of subscriptions to those that care, that allow them to get in and really understand the ESG dynamics. It's kind of a two-pronged approach. They, on the, they create an issuer profile score for the environmental piece, the social piece, and the governance piece. Lower number is better, and the scale is from five down to one. So you want, throughout this discussion, you want lower numbers, because that means that the ESG concepts have less and less of a, a negative impact on your rating. And if it's a one, it actually has a positive impact on your rating. So you get an E score, an S score, and a G score, and then they, they roll it up to something called a credit impact score, which is still on the five-to-one scale, and that demonstrates sort of how the overall ESG rating process impacts your bond rating. Okay? When you look at page 22, you will see the components at a very high level of the concepts that make up the E, the S, and the G. Environmental in blue, physical climate risk, you know, the one that maybe makes the most sense to you is where are we located? Are we on the coast? Are we not on the coast? Are we, you know, do we, we have, you know, natural disasters, storms that play a, a significant role in our credit risk or, or not? Carbon transition, in this case, it's less about, or it's really not about Lee County's quote-unquote "carbon footprint." It's more about your economy and its reliance on carbon or fossil fuel, jobs, businesses, and your exposure or vulnerability if those businesses, you know, move away or transition away to a more green concept, or through regulatory action are forced to change, or, or, you know, you know, go out of existence. You know, if you had a large coal-fired generation plant here that was producing lots of tax revenue, you know, they would look at that and say, "That is, while it's providing you this benefit, it's also an environmental risk if these environmental concepts of green and other things, or regulatory regimes, continue to, to push away from that type of technology." So that's the environmental side. The social side, there is something very specific for the public sector, and they're pulling data from, from lots of sources. Access to basic services, demographics, looking at age, education levels, health and safety, they're looking at crime statistics and other things, housing and labor and income. And then on governance, far right, looking at your institutional structure, the fact that you're in North Carolina county, you score really well as opposed to a county in another state where local government doesn't have as much control or flexibility is probably a better way to put it. Your policy credibility and effectiveness of policies, procedures, your budgeting practices, and your transparency, meaning, you know, sharing information with you all as the elected body, sharing information with citizens, all of that gets rolled up into the governance. More than you probably need, but you can look at page 23 and understand within environmental, they have one, two, three, five different numbers, or, or areas that they score. You can read about each one of those five. Same on page 24 for social. Six different ratios or data points that they collect, and governance is four on page 25. So that is all generic, not Lee County-specific, until you get to page 26, where they pull all of this together. And at the very top, that CIS, Credit Impact Score, is a two, which means that these ESG concepts have a neutral to low impact on your rating. And that's where we've seen most North Carolina local governments fall out at the CIS2. If we see anybody with a CIS3, it's usually because they're a coastal community, not because there's something else going on in that social component or governance. It's usually driven by location. And you can see within, at the bottom of 26, the, the five scores for environmental, your twos across the board, and you have an E2. For social, your twos across the board, and you have an S2. And for governmental, your ones and two for a G1. So you have, again, remember, lower's better. G1, S2, E2, that rolls up to a credit impact score of two, neutral to low impact on your bond rating from this ESG scoring approach.
Ted, I do have some points I'd like to ask. When you look at the social and the governance, you have the private sector column in both of those?
Right.
How are those coordinated into the formulation?
Those, those are formulated, I, I believe that those are applicable to private sector bond issuers, private sector entities. Whereas you're a public sector.
I see.
Entity. So where they differentiate, what you care about is the public sector column as a county versus a private company.
I find, I, I find this fascinating simply because of the fact that you have environmental, social, and governance. All of these things are subjective.
Yeah, I, I think there's elements of subjectivity, and then other places, they're using real data, but, you know, the validity and, and relevance of that data, I think you could probably dispute. But it's, there are data, there is data that they're pulling and comparing, you know, in the social, for example, health and safety. They're looking at crime statistics from one county to the next, one town to the next. And you could argue whether that's relevant or not, but they are statistics that they're comparing one place to another. I'm not defending the approach, just as we've dug into this, we've learned more about how it works. Environmental, I mean, I don't know where the line is for the, you know, the physical climate risk, right? I mean, Charlotte got hammered by this storm, and they are typically not the area of the state where we feel like, I say hammered, they felt quite a bit of, from this last storm. That's not a part of the state we usually associate with, you know, having impacts from storms. So there is some subjectivity to it, without question.
You do know that Sri Lanka is right now in dire straits economically and politically. Their ESG score, it was very high in 2019, just to share that with you. I'm, I'm just curious, though, it's interesting that we've embraced environmental and governance and social, and yet China has the same wonderful thing. China's social contract system, credit system for their, their citizens. So we've embraced environmental, which is unique because China doesn't really care about the environment. If you ever been to Beijing during the Summer Olympics, when they had to shut down all the factories that were belching coal? And their governance is wonderful because it's just one government, so you can't question their government. So we've actually expanded upon it. We've gone from social to environmental and governance. I think it's ridiculous, and it's scary.
Understood.
Any questions on ESG? Any questions so far on this great briefing until this point?
I, I thought I heard you say in the beginning that some of these issues are included already in the way we do our bonds. Are they in notch factors or something like that?
Yeah, more of the qualitative, I think, is where they would normally show up under their current methodology. Not nearly, I, I don't believe at all 15 different scores, but those concepts, I think, often would show up in those qualitative adjustments, maybe in some of the data here and there.
Listening to the chairman, I, I know he has angst about it, as do I, but that statement could make you feel better, but I'm not sure, make you feel better that they're already there, don't worry about it, Bill. But I think the answer is that maybe it's being embellished a little bit more in concept. Is that right?
Sure. I, 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 look, I mean, if we want to use Moody's, we've got to, you know, provide them what they need for their analysis, and, and they try to rate places on a comparable basis relative to one another. But I certainly understand why this concept, away from, is it relevant to our rating or not, can, you know, be bothersome to people. I certainly understand that. But they've chosen to embrace it, one reason or another. Again, I think that at least an element of this is driven by the investing community. That doesn't make it right, but those, that's really their audience. You pay for your bond rating, but investors are who's using the bond rating to make decisions about buying your bonds. And, and so they, I, I've got to imagine there's a level of all of this that is addressing a request from the investing community that says, "We want to know more." a request from the investing community that says, we want to know more, not only about public, private and public companies, but issuers and municipal bonds.
I think it's important that we remember that when we get ready to issue the $70 million that we discussed tonight, that we'll get an audience with the rating agencies, and we'll get the opportunity to tell our story and address these very issues. So what's important in this for staff is that these are things that we haven't really had to discuss in the past in our proposal. We spent a lot of time on our economy and a lot of time on our internal governance, but now we've got to look a little bit more outside our organization and, and cover some additional items. So, you know, we'll take this opportunity, I guess we'll be one of the first. If we borrow money in February or March, we'll be one of the first under the new, under the new rules, and we'll get to, we'll get to experiment with this. But, you know, I'd be a little bit more leery, I guess I would, you would say, if, if I didn't get that opportunity to speak to the people that actually rated the county before they did it. So I'm pretty, pretty happy that we'll get that opportunity.
It's okay to ask questions about the Moody's scorecard?
Please.
On page 18. On the proposed methodology under economy, you see that we're rated B double A on economic growth?
Yep. Yes, sir.
I don't, I, in my wildest estimation, I can't understand how that's possible.
So what they are, what they're doing with economic growth is, first, if you're a county, are you in an MSA, Metropolitan Statistical Area? And I don't believe that Lee County is. So they're looking at Lee County data, and what they're looking at is Lee County's gross domestic product. Now, if you were in an MSA, they would look at the gross domestic product of the MSA. But they're looking at a five-year trend in the Lee County gross domestic product compared to the five-year trend in the gross domestic product of the United States. Give me just a minute. And they're looking at those two growth rates side by side over a five-year period. And for you all, the Lee County gross domestic product from 2015 to 2020 was actually negative. The U.S. was slightly positive. This is not in your book, by the way. The net effect of that is that there is a negative correlation on that particular ratio. You all were negative, they were slightly positive. So they're looking at the difference between your number, the growth rate over that period to the U.S. growth rate. It's negative 3.2%, which for them falls in that B double A category.
So this is looking back, it doesn't give us, we have a huge amount of inertia in Lee County, and none of that inertia is coming over into that.
No, right now, the source data that they're using, which I believe is the Bureau of Economic Analysis, BEA, like it or not, that's worth their sourcing for everybody, and it's 2015 through 2020. So it's lagging a little bit. With all the things that are going on here, we may see, you know, the disparity narrow or flip.
Yeah, we're not in the Raleigh MSA. We're actually, right now, in the Fayetteville, it's not even called a MSA, it's called something else, and that's why our economic numbers are low. That's another thing that, you know, we want to point out, is that most of our growth is in the northern part of our county, is really coming from Raleigh, and that they should take that into consideration when they, when they rate us.
And remember, this is the part of the, tonight's discussion that is still a work in progress. So they may yet tweak some things on.
I understand.
Yeah.
I have one last question, and I'll give up. The, the issue of our margin to the, the next rating up, we're very close. We're very close to being able to enter into the double A1, right?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes.
In your opinion, does it give us any advantage to look at the reason why or where we could possibly change some of the elements and push toward getting to that point? Is that something that's reasonable for our local government to look at?
Well, it, it, and so under the current methodology, yes, we would do that, and we would do a more detailed analysis to see where we are lining up with the double A1s and where are we falling short, and try to determine, is there a story there? Is there a reason, something that we need to explain? And so we would, we will do that, and, and we do, we do that, and we will do that. We need to understand what this new methodology really is going to take into account in order to develop that strategy. But, but we will do that. Once they finalize all the inputs, the data, the weightings, we will be, be able to look at how are we lining up to double A3s, double A2s, double A1s, and hopefully be able to make that same argument.
A narrow, narrower focus, is it something that local government ought to look at in terms of trying to identify the, quote, weaknesses in the bond rating, and then try to target how to change them? Is that something?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think, I do think it's, it should be part of your consideration as you're putting policy and budgets together. I mean, think about that current methodology that we were just talking about. There are things in there that are, are very difficult to control in any budget cycle, total tax base, right? I mean, that is, you can't control that in the near term. That is a longer-term play of creating a community where people want to come, invest, grow, and values go up. Median family income, I'm talking about the current methodology. Again, that's about economic development and recruiting certain types of businesses that get wage levels up. So I think those are all really important things for you all to take into account, but those are probably at a higher level strategy initiative type. And then you get into some of these other ratios that you can control a little more budget to budget, you know? And so I don't think you need to manage yourself exclusively for the rating agencies, but generally speaking, maybe ESG to the side, their concepts are pretty solid, right? I mean, they, they do, they do tend to look at things that, you know, indicate a growing, stronger community versus less so, or, and, and again, remember, what they're trying to do when they do all of this is they're trying to assign the risk for an investor that you're not going to, you know, pay your bond payment. And I will tell you, the difference between double A2 and double A3, or double A2 and double A1 is, you know, it, it, I'm not going to say it doesn't matter, because it does. A higher bond rating is better at a lot of levels, but it's, it's also the difference between borrowing at a 375 and a 380. I mean, it's not this tremendous difference in borrowing. It ebbs and flows, don't get me wrong. It's not static, but we're not talking about the difference between four and four and a half.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other questions from Mr. Cole?
Thank you, Ted. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is hiring two additional staff members for the Board of Elections, and I believe Jane is here.
Yes, my first time to have the opportunity to speak to the board. I want to thank you for this opportunity, and I am Jane Ray Fawcett with the Board of Elections. I've been here approximately 14 months. The Lee County Board of Elections had its regular meeting on September 14th and passed, passed unanimously the motion for the Director of Elections to seek approval to fund the addition of a full-time staff attorney for the Board of Elections, or adequate funds to hire outside counsel, and for a second permanent full-time staff member with their primary focus to address public records requests and to be a backup person for our existing elections technician. The requests for an attorney and public information coordinator to be hired were discussed by the board after we have received multiple public information requests for extensive information that must be in compliance with North Carolina general statutes, and we have even received a notice of prospective litigation and demand for records retention. We have an obligation to fill these requests, but it should not impede election preparation. If we fill these requests now, we would not be able to adequately prepare for the upcoming election on November 8th, which is in 36 days, in case you're not counting. The task of filling these public information requests has many moving parts. It is not a quick process. If there is a request for a list of voters, that is one thing. However, most of these requests we have been receiving involve coordination of internal and external sources. Some of these requests are requiring legal advice from an attorney that has election experience. We must track the request to know where it is in the process. Some require notice to the State Board of Elections, and all requests require that we go through our county attorney, public information officer, and county clerk. Some of these requests require a work order from the county attorney to IT, to staff, to IT staff to retrieve emails. Some require we pull retention files and tabulator tapes from elections. After the information is obtained, we must redact these materials and then make copies of these materials for security purposes. And then lastly, forward to the county attorney, clerk to the board, and public information officer for review before it is sent to Requerster. To give you an example, one of these requests that we have filled was for the tabulator zero results tapes and for the total result tapes for the Beasley-Newby recount in 2020. This involved two staff members and required 24 hours of manpower for this one request, and was one that I thought was doable before the next election. It was done, but it's the only one that we have completed that requires that amount of time. In addition, we have more than far, more that are far more involved. For example, one such request is asking for information, including every ballot, its sequential ID, timestamps, the method of voting, and more for the 2020 election, where we had over 29,000 voters cast a ballot in Lee County. We also have inquiries from national, state, and local news outlets who are asking for information for stories that are currently being written. I think you guys are probably affected by that within the past week yourselves. These are impossible to fill while trying to prepare for the general election in November at our current staffing levels. The State Board of Elections has advised us that they do not see an end to these types of requests in the near future, and possibly an increase before the 2024 election. Currently, we only have four full-time employees, and we are not equipped for such volume and complexity these types of requests are requiring while trying to prepare for an election. There's also constant change in our election laws that require constant change in implementation of new procedure regularly in our daily tasks. I believe that you have now two job descriptions that I completed, and that has been approved by my board, and Ms. Joyce McGee, he has time to review in your packets for tonight. Does anyone have any questions?
Questions from Ms. Fawcett. Commissioner Lovick?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Sharp?
No, but I just think we ought to give them what they need.
Commissioner Connect?
Now, you, for legal advice, you've been using our attorneys as well, our county attorneys, right?
We've been using State Board attorneys and Whitney, and sometimes the State Board Attorney will say, let's turn this over to the county attorney. Sometime it'll take them a week or more. I even have one response right now from the State Board that says, we will get back with you when humanly possible. I think I received that a couple of weeks ago. So we have been seeking advice, and Whitney's been wonderful when she can be in, in helping us out, all, all the girls have.
Commissioner Carver?
No questions.
Did you have a letter?
Mr. Reeves would like to have the following incorporated into the minutes. He says, I fully support the manager's recommendation for the Board of Elections, each one of the appropriations for the attorney and the new hire.
I guess I should explain my recommendation then, right? So I've recommended that we approve up to $50,000 for the Board of Elections to hire outside counsel during this period, and to go ahead and fund the coordinator assistant position. I actually reviewed that position back in March with Jane Ray, and it's not often that I make a recommendation to a department head and they don't take it, but she probably wishes she took it now.
Absolutely, sir. I was new.
At the time of analyzing everything, we went through every position in her department, everything that was going on, and the, the technician that she has does a lot of work in preparing for each election, and it's taking longer and longer and longer to get prepared, and then also there's a review of every election. So it just seems like the position that that, that work that that position is doing is constant, and there's only one person doing it, and she does an incredible job. But I felt like we needed to have backup for that position, because if anything happened to that person, we would not be able to, we would have a very difficult time holding an election without that person. So I fully support that position and to go ahead and put money in their professional services so they can hire outside counsel.
Now, we, we can hold out monies too, and when they request for it, we can always hand it to them, correct?
Well, you need to put some in there. I was asked today how much money is in their professional line item. I think they had originally budgeted $12,000. $12,000, once they pay the retainer and start paying, an outside counsel person isn't going to go very far. So you would need to at least put another $20,000 in that line item to get started. And then, you know, if you wanted them to come back and ask for, you know, more money in the future, they could do that as well.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the county manager's recommendations of the assistant, and then put that money in there legal.
Motion's been made to approve the hiring of a coordinator assistant and allocate $50,000 so the Board of Elections can hire outside counsel. Any discussions, questions? Commissioner Lovick?
I'm good, thank you, sir.
Commissioner Sharp?
Sir, I heard you clear about, say, about the money. You're not, you're not wanting us to hold a portion.
They need more, they can come ask us for more.
The whole amount.
We're putting a 20 in.
Putting a 20 in?
That was a recommendation by the county manager.
The motion.
I thought the recommendation was 50.
But he asked, you know, would they all need it, you know, now, or would they, you know, could they come back and ask for more? And I, and based the amount of money they have right now, just to get started, they would need the 20 and then have to come back, I believe, in the future, but it just depends.
I don't see why we wouldn't give them 50. We got people chasing election workers back to the Board of Elections, and people wanting to get in the machines. I feel like they're going to need to retain her sooner or later, but anyway, thank you.
Commissioner Carver?
Point of order is that you read it out as $50,000, right? That was what we were voting on?
Approve the hiring of a coordinator assistant and allocate $50,000 so the Board of Elections can hire outside counsel.
Sorry, I misunderstood the motion.
I, my motion was coordinator and 20,000.
And 20,000, I'm sorry. I misread.
That's why I asked the question.
20,000. Okay. I amend the motion. Approve the hiring. I'm sorry, I didn't hear 20.
And if required, they can always come back and request.
So, so adding to your motion is $20,000, and they can come back to request more?
If they need more for outside counsel.
If they need more for outside counsel. Okay. Let me do this again. Approve the hiring of a coordinator assistant and allocate $20,000 to the Board of Elections to hire outside counsel, and if they need to acquire more funds, come back to the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Is it clear? Is it clear, Madam Clerk? Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item up for new business, recommendation award project, 4843-0122, historic Lee County courthouse designed to hob architects. Mr. Haraldo, good to see you, sir.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioner.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. On August 11, 2022, we opened an RFQ for Project 4843-0123 for the historic Lee County Courthouse design. We opened a total of four seal qualifications from firms throughout the state and one from Virginia. These proposals were reviewed using a predetermined panel, using eleven factors for discrimination, and from that, we conducted three in-person interviews, and then on September 6, our staff conducted a site visit to one of our finalists, which is Hobbs Architects out of Pittsburgh, North Carolina. And I also, we also conducted distance site tours, so they sent us some links, and we were able to look at some of their work from some of the other firms. By unanimous consensus, the staff recommends the approval of Hobbs Architects from Pittsburgh, North Carolina. They have, they are a reputable firm, and they have successfully completed several projects with a similar scope in the restoration specifically of the Chatham County Courthouse. They provided a proven track record for stakeholder engagement throughout the design and construction process, and we were impressed with their leadership as well as their, as well as everything that happened when we attended the site visit. So, I recommend the award of the project 4843-0122 for our historically Lee County Courthouse design to Hobbs Architects, and I'm also recommending requesting the, you give us the opportunity to begin working on the contract and negotiation of prices for the services.
Any questions? Commissioner Carver?
None.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Sharp?
No.
Commissioner Lovick?
No, sir.
I do have one question.
No, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion's been made to approve stack recommendations for approval of Hobbs Architects from Pittsburgh, North Carolina for Project 4843-0122, historic Lee County Courthouse design.
Sure.
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Will they have a fire extinguisher?
Hopefully, sir.
Good.
So, all we're doing right now is the design, so we had a really good visit with them. They sent us a good video. I mean, obviously, that was a significant event that happened to that community and see how they were able to bring that building back to just a great, great experience with them. So, we were extremely pleased, and then, you know, they're a very good North Carolina firm, so that makes it even better. Yes, sir.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now, if we can, please, Marshall's going to load up something on the projector, but I just wanted to have a quick discussion on Project 4839-022, which is our Lee County Multi-Sports Complex. Now, as you know, we're moving along the, on the project itself, and we're doing some schematic work, and we do some engineering and all that stuff, but, but as we get closer and moving forward the project, we also need to start steering our architects in which direction and what flavor, I guess, call it that. We want the park to have the theme. So, that's what we want to discuss today. We have three separate design fields for the park. So, we have one that's traditional, so if you look at the screen, you see, and the way that it was described to us, it will have to feel more like a college campus, so they use some of the big schools to kind of, kind of shape this a little bit, and you see it's got some brickwork, and it's got some, some more, you know, traditional lighting. The next one, it's contemporary, so this one, it's a little bit more, you know, kind of similar to what you would see in a Sanley Nature Park Center, so obviously, a little bit more different materials. You can be a little bit more creative with some of the buildings themselves. And then the last one is called whimsical, which is a new word to me, but that is really a playful, playful kind of architecture, and it's got vibrant colors, and it's got different textures and stuff, and is reminiscent of some of the parks that happen on the coast. I think Wilmington is the one that, that was brought, brought to our attention. However, just keep in mind that, you know, we, we can, there's no right answer. We, we don't have to say whimsical, and everything will be whimsical. You know, obviously, all we want to do is provide guidance to them, so we, we can blend some of this, some of the styles a little bit, so that is the discussion we wanted to have. Now, I would say that before we opened that, and obviously, we, we had some internal conversations, and we had a meeting with them today, and based on our target audience for the park, being the youth twelve and under, we probably wanted to have a little bit more, more of a playfulness to it, a little bit more of a, you know, contemporary design, but we also feel that in some areas, some of the whimsical features will be important, so like in the playground, you know, because we're going to have little kids in there, so they'll be fun to have some colors, something a little bit more, you know, appealing to, to little ones. And then, we also talked about not only adding a theme, but also adding some color to it, and the UDO for the city and the county provides some guidance in what colors and textures to use and not use, so we're not going to have, you know, pink buildings and things of that nature, you know, but, but we're going to be able to show fields and areas using specific colors, so, you know, we would have maybe a blue area of fields, would be the soccer fields or rectangular fields, and then we would have a, a green area of fields, which would be our diamonds. So, when somebody comes to the park and say, hey, we're going to meet at the Green Park or the Green whatever, and that'll, that will let people know that, you know, that's the area where they're going to. So, so again, I just wanted to open that discussion and, and just kind of see where, where you were headed so that we can meet with these folks and give them some guidance. Now, this is kind of coming pretty fast, because if we are intending to go out to bid on the first quarter of next year, we just really want to get the, keep the ball moving. So, I'm going to meet again with them tomorrow and just give them the feedback from our discussion so we can keep the project going. And our intent is to bring it forward to the city planning review and boards and TRC, you know, in the next couple of months so we can be out to a bid, because obviously, we're going to have to do some pre-qualification and some stuff, so we have a lot of moving pieces. But for right now, I just would like for you guys to look at, and lady staff, I guess too, of course, to take a look at this and just kind of give us an idea of what you're looking at, and if you have any themes that sticking out the most, and then we'll take it from there.
Did you ask the Parks and Rec Panel to review this? Was this covered in your board?
If it, it hadn't unless it was covered last meeting, which I wasn't there, and Joseph was shaking his head no.
It wasn't covered? This is where the young person comes in handy.
Well, you should ask Joseph to come up here so he can make his pitch real quick.
Mr. Kill, sir, please.
I'll just go ahead and let the board know I was outvoted by every member in the room, so, and when I gave them my opinion, so that's why they're before you tonight, and that's why they're all laughing.
So, sir, yeah, this was not brought up at the last board meeting. Like Santiago said, this is moving so quickly. Our board has not had a chance to look at these three different themes yet, but given the idea of the sportsplex part, I, I feel that it needs to have a fun kind of environment to it.
Fun sometimes means more, more cost.
It does, it does. So, of course, budget's, budget's the main concern, but when you're looking at the whimsical look to it, it does give it that park feel.
And also harder upkeep.
That's a question from Mick Adams. I can't answer that.
So, we discussed some of the, you're, good point, great point, sir. Yeah, so, so we looked at some of the specific things that we were going to ask from the maintenance perspective. Obviously, we, you know, roofing, HVAC, IT stuff, that's all into consideration, and then we looked at innovative ways to keep the cost down. So, instead of, we looked at some of the picnic shelters, having some, you know, prefabricated, you know, materials, some of the stuff that's easier and more budget-friendly. For finishes, we looked at a combination of brick, stone, and, and hardy board instead of doing all, all brick, all stone, and then using some of the fun colors instead of on the entire facility, just highlighting some of the key, like the doors, the trim, to give it, still give it that color distinction without having to go out of our way and, and doing it like that. So, there's, there's definitely, you know, we're definitely budget conscious, and we know what the budget is, so there's no, they know there's no wiggle room, because you're right. If we, you can design a beautiful masterpiece, and then, you know, you build, that's the example we brought up today. We don't want to build a twenty million dollar restroom. We, we need to have a restroom, you know, but it needs to have certain features, and it needs to have a certain feel, but it still needs to feel like a park that targets, you know, twelve, twelve-year-olds and under, so, but it still has to meet UDO requirements. So, obviously, we have to make sure that we, we're in compliance with those finishes and, and those, the guidance that we have from the city, okay?
I think the staff's consensus was a combination of two and three, and, of course, I was, I voted for number one.
Of course you did. We knew that.
And the, and the whimsical term, that's, that's new to me as well, but if you look at the playgrounds that we put at Kiwanis Children and Horton, we've already kind of done the whimsical look, and it's going over great. You know, parents and kids love that bold colors, and, you know, it's not something that you would see years ago. This is new and inventive, the neon greens and the blues. So, we've already kind of introduced that whimsical look in our parks, and it's going off great.
So, we could do that specifically for the parks and then work on another theme for the rest of it?
Absolutely.
I mean, we're talking about the playground, excuse me.
Yeah.
Yes, and that was, that was kind of what we talked about, you know, somewhere where you would have the little kids, you probably want a little bit of color, a little bit of fun, you know, some of the texture stuff, and then the restrooms, you know, and stuff like that would just make it, you know, different, different style, but we had a discussion, of course, roofing and skylights and all the stuff that we don't want, so here in the near future, after we looked at what we want, obviously, we got our maintenance department ready.
Wait, 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 stop.
Yes, sir.
We just went through the ESG thing. Skylights are natural light, yes?
They, they, they leak a lot, so we don't, we want to stay.
They leak a lot? Oh, oh, okay.
So, I learned from Mr. Spivey that a flat roof is a leaky roof, so we definitely going to stay away from those.
Exactly, I got it.
So.
Okay, we clarified that, thank you. Leaking is not good.
But yes, sir, like Dr. Kemptner said, the combination of two and three is, is what we're kind of leaning towards.
So, you want to stick with the playgrounds being whimsical? Is that a consensus? Want to vote? Make a motion?
Consensus is probably all they need.
Consensus is what you need? Stick with whimsical on the parks or the playground? Excuse me? Traditional for the fields?
Contemporary.
Contemporary.
Contemporary?
Yes, sir.
Define contemporary for the field.
It will not look like the Virginia Tech campus. It will look more like a modern.
I've never been to the Virginia Tech campus, but...
Yeah, I'm the Kung-Fu College, I kind of went all over the earth roaming for that.
I think he just took a shot at Ben, who's a Virginia Tech grad.
Okay, sorry, Ben.
But I think, I think it's going to be, that contemporary style will be a good blend of what the nature center is right now, so we will have some of the modern features, but it will still be efficient, and, you know, it will just be, you know, a little bit more updated, and it still, it still maintains some of the character, so we'll still have your brick and your stone and your hardy black, so.
Anybody else? This is where that young person come in handy. Marshall, are you a state graduate?
I was from here, I'm from Oregon.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Not from here.
He's not from here.
Sure.
Okay, whimsical for the playground? Contemporary for the rest of it? Do I have a motion?
I think they're just looking for direction, aren't they?
Direction? Okay. Sounds like direction.
Yes, sir.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Planning Board Recommendations for Resoning Request. Yes, sir. Name again, please.
So, good evening. My name is Curtis Lee.
Curtis?
I'm the new planner, one that was hired to take over rezonings from Ms. McNeil. So, you may be seeing a lot of me coming up in the future. So, turning to the rezoning, regarding the application by Street Dog Properties LLC, three zone four adjoining tracts of land totaling four point four five acres, addresses three two two four and three two two six Hawkins Ave, from residential agricultural RA to highway commercial HC to allowing installation of a self-standing ice vending machine on the subject property. The planning board met on September 12th after the public hearing was held and voted unanimously to recommend that the commissioners approve the proposed zoning map amendment. The board discussed the development patterns surrounding the site, existing zoning districts and traffic patterns, concluding that highway commercial uses fit the Plan Sanley designation of Maker District. Using this rationale, they deemed the request consistent with the long-range plan. As a reminder, the commissioners should make two votes regarding this matter. Sample motions are provided for your reference. The board is always welcome to draft a unique motion if preferred. Also, the board may acknowledge that the zoning map amendment is not consistent with Plan Sanley long-range plan and still vote to approve the request. Are there any questions?
And just as a reminder, for the 160D 109 conflict of interest, a governing board member shall not vote on any zoning amendment if the landowner of the property, subject to the rezoning petition, or the applicant is a person with whom the member has a close familial business or other associational, associational, associational relationship. So, if there's any conflict of interest, any of the board members.
Does anybody have a conflict of interest with this project or with this rezoning property? No one here? Motion to approve the recommendation, do I have one, please, for the rezoning request?
Move to approve.
Motion's been made to consider...
Motion one, is that right?
Motion been made to consider the planning board's recommendation for rezoning request and vote. Do we need the Plan Sanley first?
Yes, I think Dr. Connect made the motion, vote one, motion one, that it is consistent with the plan.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then the next motion?
Motion to approve option one on vote number two, which is approve.
Motion proposing... Motion two? I'm sorry.
On vote number two, motion option one.
Okay. Which is approve the proposed zoning map amendment because the site is appropriate for a highway commercial land use and is reasonable and in the public interest, given the location along busy roadway and access to public water. Any further discussion, questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Horton Pool Project Change Order Number Three. Mr. Geraldo's back again.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Early in June of this year, while we were working on the sanitation facility, the pool house for Horton Pool, we realized that we had a substantial amount of unsuitable soils, and then we've been working with our design firm and engineering firm McGill to come out with a plan to convey with our, to be able to tackle that with our prime contract, which is JM Thompson and O'Reilly. What you have before you, we've, we've come out with a plan, we agreed on a plan, and what we have right now is the change order, change order three, which this is kind of, if you don't have it, I'll, I'll share, but the grand total amount for the, the labor part of the abatement, so the materials and everything that we're doing here is forty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. So, that is what we're working today. Now, change order four, which will come in the future, addresses specifically the extension of the amount that will be granted on the contract to the contractor, as well as labor fees that will be associated with this. So, I just wanted to make sure that we understood that there will be two change orders associated with the unsuitable soils. The one that you have before you is for, for the labor, just for this right now specifically, so we can get these guys going, but then will be a subsequent change order that would address the contract changes. We don't have that amount yet. We, we have a really good solid amount yet, right now, but we were in negotiation when, when this was due, so that change order will be provided soon. And obviously, I was, I would like to request approval for this change order three to this project, but I would also request that you give our county manager the ability to approve change order four when it comes back from the, from our design firm and our contracting firm, once we agreed on the price for that.
The contractor has, you know, basically because of the delay, asked for an extension, and the reason for the ask to approve future change orders, which would be within budget, so we have contingencies on both projects, the pool house and the pool, would be for me to allow, for me to use the contingency funds to keep the project moving in between board meetings, because I'm expecting more change orders just because of what they're running into with the, the old building. So, they've asked for an extension to have the building complete, and basically, we're running up on the May 1st deadline, so we've got to have this project finished if we want it to use. So we've got to have this project finished if we want it to use it Memorial Day weekend. They need to meet that May 1st deadline, so we don't need to hold them up anymore with change orders. So as long as they're small, change orders, I think one project's around 35,000 contingency, the other one's 45. And, you know, we'll stay below those numbers. If we have to go above those numbers, we'll have to bring it to the board anyway. But we've got to, you know, this project has been stalled and these change orders are the only thing that's going to keep it going and get it going because of what they've run into.
Any questions, Mr. Geraldo or the manager? Do I have a motion, please?
I move that we approve change order three for the Horton Pool Project.
Do you wish to add to it?
The county manager.
The county manager approving change order four?
I do, thank you.
The motion's been made to approve the Horton Pool Project Change Order Number Three and allow the county manager to move forward with change order number four. Any further questions, discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is the allocation of ARPA revenue loss funds for Horton Park Bath House Project.
Yes, sir. As you just heard, we've had some issues at Horton Park and we need to allocate another $125,000 to that project. And we're proposing to use revenue loss funds. And they would come out of the section that you had last, at the last meeting, section two, the future proposal of the $1,002,000, I can't see my numbers, $68,775 that we have proposed projects for, but you've not approved those yet. We are proposing taking $35,000 out for the security lighting for the parks. That may be able to be funded from leftover park project money from earlier. There's reducing $850, $850 from the weatherization and home repair proposal that would be ran by senior services. And then taking the $89,150 from the emergency operations center upgrade that was proposed to fund the $125,000 for the ARPA, for the Horton Pool Project.
Any questions, Elisa, regarding the realotment of funds? Motion's been made to approve the allocation of $125,000 of the ARPA revenue loss funds to the Horton Park Bath House Project to cover costs associated with unsuitable soils that have been found at the site and delays that have, the issue has caused. Any other questions, further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
It is the 2022 Fire Prevention Week Proclamation. And we have the proclaimer of Fire Prevention Week.
You've got two of them, actually.
You look, you look sharp.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for giving us this opportunity tonight to present the following proclamation, which looks to recognize Fire Prevention Week with an ultimate goal of supporting the mission of reducing injury and death as well as property loss as it relates to home fires.
Whereas Lee County is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our county, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greater risk from fire. And whereas home fires caused 2,580 civilian deaths in the United States in 2020, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 356,500 home fires. And whereas smoke alarms sense smoke well before you can, alerting you to danger in the event of fire in which you have as little as two minutes to escape safely. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. And whereas Lee County residents should be sure everyone in the home understands the sounds of the smoke alarms and knows how to respond. And whereas Lee County residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas Lee County residents will make sure their smoke and carbon monoxide alarms meet the needs of their family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities. And whereas Lee County first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas Lee County residents that are responsive to public education measures are better able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the 2022 Fire Prevention Week theme, Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape, effectively serves to remind Lee County it is important to have a home fire escape plan. And now therefore be it resolved that the Lee County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim October 9th through the 15th of 2022 as Fire Prevention Week throughout this county. And I urge all the people of Lee County to plan and practice a home fire escape for Fire Prevention Week 2022 and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Lee County's Fire and Emergency Services.
Do I have motion to approve the resolution?
Motion.
Motion's been made to approve the Fire, Fire Awareness Week, Fire Prevention Week proclamation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Gentlemen, thank you. And I do want to say sorry about your weekend. You were busy. Trust that we're going to be okay in the next one.
We wouldn't have it any other way.
Thank you much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the Basis of Charges for Work with TERRAQUEST.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. On Schedule A in your agenda packet on this item, there's a project request for $85,863. It's broken down into four sections with the well installation along the building, a vacuum event, groundwater sampling, and vapor intrusion study. The reason the board needs to approve this is this, this item takes us over the 60,000 the board has already allocated. And we still have around 31,000 available, but that means we're $54,800 short above my authorities. So I need the board to approve this work authorization. These funds will come from our fund balance. As the, you know, other funds of 600,000 are now being expended. So now this one comes out of, 50% out of our pocket and 50% out of the developer's pocket going forward.
Motion approved.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you didn't?
I was gonna, yeah, I was gonna, these maps that TERRAQUEST provided, that there's a small one. But if you look at the big one, the big ones, you'll see one that has a lot of red on it. That was the material that they were going after to pull out. And then after the first exercise, this is what it looks like now. It's almost all green with a little orange and yellow. But there's an area here that's that green where we don't have any of the wells. And they need to put, they're going to put four wells in there and vacuum that out. I would tell you if this was the last one, but when I asked that question, Whitney will be my witness, they said no. So, you know, they have to vacuum the wells as many times as it takes for the, all the material to be gone. So they'll do another vacuum event, do the testing. And then we'll get to a level and we'll see what the state wants us to do next. But I will, all I can say is that we are getting closer to not having to do these events anymore. I just don't, I can't guarantee that this is our last one.
Motion's been made to approve the Basis of Charges for Work with TERRAQUEST to the amount of $85,863. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the State of the County Report. Ben?
Good evening, Commissioners. First off, I appreciate the ability to speak with you all tonight. If I haven't had the opportunity to meet you yet, my name is Ben McCary and I am the NCACC ICMA Management Fellow. That's my official title. Pretty much Dr. Crumpton's intern, but, you know, that's just a casual title. For my first project with the county, we were doing the State of the County Report. And I looked at recent ones that had been done and other items such as that. And I really wanted to create something that the, the public could really interact with. So first off, my goals, I want to create something that the public can easily interact with, content that the public can very easily share on social media, such like that. So that obviously points towards video being a large portion of this project. And that's what it ended up being. And also, I wanted to learn more about Lee County, being that I'm new in my position, new to Lee County. I am from Tennessee, so new in general to North Carolina. And I've really enjoyed getting to speak with managers, getting to collect survey results and really get involved in county government. For data collection, I mainly did surveys. That was my main point of data collection. I did receive responses from every single department. And some were many, many pages and some were short, but that doesn't make any of them bad. I appreciate all of the department heads for participating in my project. And of course, I did make sure I got their approval before I put anything in the report. Here are just some key statistics. These are mainly in the written report. If you look at the one that is at your seat, there's more than what I put up here. I just wanted to highlight maybe a couple. Obviously, there's been strong population growth and it's projected to be just as strong. I found it interesting that the county is exactly split 50-50 between population with inside municipal limits and outside. There's a fair amount of diversity in terms of racial makeup and also languages spoken at home. And then also the employment rate has been going down. Yeah, so take these as you will. Just wanted to provide them for the board. And so for the report, I wanted to focus on five distinct areas. First being economic development. Obviously, most things that happen in local government have to run through funds being raised and that is frequently done through economic development. So that is the first and foremost thing that we discuss in the piece. Second off, healthy and educated citizens. The COVID-19 pandemic has obviously been a very large thing in our lives and that is discussed in the report as well. Maintaining a safe, clean community. This amasses multiple different departments in their work with the sheriff's office, with emergency management, social services. Fourth off, we have enhancing community resources. These are mainly spaces and items that the community is interacting with, i.e. parks, buildings. And then fourth, or last, we have the efficient usage of tax dollars. This is, I mean, the entire report is pretty much to show that Lee County is using tax dollars efficiently. And then it gets into a little bit exactly some of the numbers. There's, I didn't want to include too many numbers in the report specifically because obviously they can read budget, they can read financial reports if they really want to get into that. So I just included the base things for that. So as a little introduction, I have a preview video for the, for the video that we created. The actual video is close to 20 minutes long and I didn't want to make you all sit through that tonight. So I reduced it to around six and a half minutes. And we can watch that here. Do I need to click it? If, if it's in presentation mode, it should just be. If, if you present it. If you just click the slide. It's not working. Okay, well. Well, we'll get it to work, but in the meantime, I, I want to thank all of the people who participated in the video. Obviously, Chairman, he was a large portion of the video, doing both the introduction and economic development pieces and then our closing. I had. We had pretty, pretty wide participation in the video and we're good? Okay. Done with my spieling? No? Okay. Yeah, it's in the video. Well. If you can get the link off of it. It's, it's an unlisted video, so I don't know if. Yep. Well. It worked earlier on my computer, so I do, I do apologize. Aye. Well. I encourage everyone to go to our YouTube page and watch the full video. If you really are so inclined to watch the preview video, I can make that a public one. But yeah, it is live. It did go live at 5:30 today and the report is at your seats. So if it can't work now, possibly at a later meeting, it can be shown. Yeah.
Well, Ben, thank you.
Hey, Ben, you got something to tell your bank?
Ah, technology is a wonderful thing. Ben, you do know that Tennessee is the western counties of North Carolina. Thank you, Ben. It was fun. I watched the whole 20-minute one. Arianna was on there. Haley was on there. Who else was on there? I'm trying to remember. Oh. Santiago and, and Joseph. All right, Managers' Report, August 2022 Financial Report. Hi, Candace.
You have before you the August 2022 Monthly Financial Report. As a reminder, sales tax revenues run three months behind. Our tax collections as a percentage of the budget through August 22 is 0.02% ahead of the same period last year. In reviewing the expenditures, the percentage used target is 16.67%. Several departments are above the target due to the payment of annual dues and maintenance agreements, the employee computer purchase program, and juvenile detention housing, as well as the inclusion of the encumbrance column. Human services nonprofits are above target due to the lump sum payment to the North Carolina Veterans Council and departments that are showing 25% used as a result of quarterly appropriations.
Any questions for Candace? Commissioner Lovick?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Sharp? Commissioner Connect? Commissioner Carver? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Candace, before you leave, want to congratulate Candace and Lisa and all their staff on getting the GFOA award for the Certified Audit Report. So congratulations to them. How many years in a row now?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. So that's pretty good. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you for that reminder, John.
Are you really going to play it now? All right.
Ben, come on back.
Chairman doesn't shut you down. We're okay.
Wait a minute, Ben.
Mr. Chairman, if you could please take a minute to watch the video. Ben worked really hard on this and it was definitely a, a. Ben worked really hard on this, and it was definitely a group effort with a lot of the departments. So we would just like to take a few minutes to, to watch it. Thank you.
Oh. That's good. Need a lip reader. Ryan speakers.
I can play my laptop.
Take your mic.
This has been some of the toughest Lee County face, but at the same time, defined by unprecedented progress and growth within our community. After years of hard work, our local economic development efforts are coming to fruition. This is becoming increasingly evident with rapid increases in sales and property capital strategies, even as our region recovers from the COVID-19 pandemic. Lee County government's relationship with the Sanford Area Growth Alliance, or SAGA, is stronger than ever. Their staff is working tirelessly to attract new companies and expand business opportunities within our county. From large corporations investing in shell buildings at Central Carolina Enterprise Park to the revitalization efforts taking place in downtown Sanford, our citizens can see this advancement firsthand. We are seeing thousands of new jobs being announced in our region every year. Four of the top 25 North Carolina job creating projects of 2021 are right here in Lee County, with Central Carolina Enterprise Park alone securing nearly $350 million in new capital investments. This growth in Lee County's tax base has a clear impact on the current and future county budgets. Since 2016, the county has seen a $1.5 billion increase in its tax base, leading to large increases in operating revenues.
A notable recent development is the purchase and transformation of the former Magnetti Morelli factory in Sanford. The site has been a longtime asset for our community, and a joint effort between Lee County and CCCC is giving it new life as the Eugene Moore Manufacturing and Biotech Solutions Center.
The North Carolina Cooperative Extension has been making great efforts as well to improve the health of all Lee County residents through healthy, locally grown food. The new Sanford Agricultural Marketplace project has given the community the ability to celebrate its rich history and diversity through food and fellowship.
The protection of all Lee County residents is vital for our success as a community. It requires many county departments to work in tandem. For us in law enforcement, we strive to prevent crime in our communities through responsible policing, school programming, and targeted programs to address pertinent issues in our community, such as the opioid crisis.
County's IT department has been committed to advancing the technology available to county employees and protecting computer systems from outside threats. One exciting project we've been working on recently is the launch of a new website. It's more streamlined, secure, stable, and accessible, but we will continue to work on its features based on your feedback.
We have made an effort to invest in our community by renovating older facilities and building new ones to suit our growing population. Multiple large projects are nearing completion and others are well underway. The Government Center, home of our Health Department and Clinic, Social Services and Tax Administration, has undergone significant renovations to increase operational efficiency and accessibility. The historical courthouse interior has seen significant renovation as well. And now, with assistance from the North Carolina Historical Preservation Office, we will be renovating the exterior of this historical building so that it can continue to be a landmark of our community for many years to come.
Enhancing the parks of Lee County has been a major focus in the past few years. Kiwanis Children's Park, Temple Park, Fort Park, and Oats and Sloane have all seen major renovations to include new playground equipment, shelters, basketball, tennis, and pickleball courts. In addition to the new spaces, we have expanded our program offerings and seen massive jumps in registrations this year alone.
The Lee County Library has experienced a reawakening in 2022. Thousands of community members are utilizing our library facility monthly for materials, research, and more. Our summer reading program was a huge success with record-breaking program attendance and reading incentive registrations. Staff continuously assesses and transforms library services and programming based on the needs of you, our community. Herb side pickup is here to stay, online resources have been increased, and our Broadway branch is back open with a fresh new look.
Efficient and responsible usage of your tax dollars is ingrained in everything we do in Lee County. We've invested in each of our departments so that they can continue to offer premier services, all while ensuring that they do so without waste. In order to run our programs, Lee County now employs over 400 full-time employees and upwards of 200 to 300 part-time employees. Our tax administration staff were able to obtain a 99.19 collection rate for all county taxes, the highest rate known by staff. This efficient collection ensures that all programs continue to operate within the bounds of the adopted county budget.
Our Board of Commissioners proudly serve you, the citizens of Lee County. We will continue to dedicate our mission of creating an effective, efficient, and responsible government, providing the services necessary to truly make Lee County a place to live, learn, work, and play. Thank you for your commitment, your resilience, and your passion for Lee County. God bless.
Commissioner comments, then we will have a closed session to go into. Commissioner Lovick?
Just congratulations again to our finance department. Thanks, everybody, for coming out tonight. Long session again tonight, but we're going to make it through it. Thank you.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yeah, again, congratulations to the financial department. And also, me and my wife made it through the storm without a limb coming through the roof. Some of our neighbors did not. But I think we, we got lucky on, on this one pretty much, and looking, looking at Fort Myers and other places down there, I'm just thankful that we didn't get that, that part of it. That's all.
Commissioner Connect?
I just want to give kudos to our first responders, fire department, people, you know, hunkered down, but they don't see them out there cutting those limbs down and keeping the roads clear through that storm. We appreciate that, as they do every single time we have these storms, which is dangerous because they could be in the midst of a tree falling down while they're getting one out of the roadway. But prayers go out to people in Florida. Thank you.
Commissioner Carver?
I just want to reflect on the reports that we heard from Davenport tonight. Again, it shows that not only are we managed well, but we also are blessed, I think, in having the kind of resources that we have and the financial position we have. Obviously, there are many counties in North Carolina that are not in that same situation. So like I say, it speaks well of the management, but it also speaks well of the fact that we're put in a place where we have the advantage of a lot of opportunity here that I think we're capitalizing on. So I was glad to hear that report tonight.
I've got a few things here. First off, I do want to congratulate against the finance folks. 26 years. Very good. Keep it up. You're going to need a longer wall down the hallway.
Fans will still kind of come out as long as they've been allowed.
That's scary. Okay, we did have Ian pay us a visit. I, I can't say enough about our emergency services department, our law enforcement, our fire departments, even the electric companies on line. They put themselves out on the line, literally, to get us back online. Again, Florida had it pretty rough. Unfortunately, half my family lives down there now, and they fared okay. But we mean, we need to be aware that these things are dangerous. When the emergency services in the state says, "Do something," please do it for your own safety. Follow the instructions of those folks that are in charge. It's nothing to play with. I did have Haley print off the Sanford Area Growth Alliance had our annual meeting the other night. It was fantastic. And we have a multi-page information that I asked Haley to provide each of you a copy of. It's also on their website as well, but it, it just highlights what Lee County did. And there's quite a few items on here. I'm not going to read them all. But pretty impressive when you combine it all, the work that this board has done, this staff has done, this county and community in general has done over the past year. It's, it's just amazing, and it's a great thing to say. And just want to give kudos to everybody involved. Thank you. Commissioner Lovick?
Mr. Chair, I'd like a motion, make a, make a motion, we go into closed session per North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, subsection A4, to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of business.
Motion been made to go into closed session. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Can we take five minutes, folks? Let's, let's make that 10 minutes, ladies and gentlemen.
...
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion adjourned.
Motion been made to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're now adjourned. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Please drive safely. Wear your seatbelts and no speeding.